There we go. Okay, we will call the, call the order, the Village of Oregon Board Meeting for Monday, October sec- October 2nd, 2023, first, item one, uh, or item two, roll call.
Beshin?
Here.
Bealow?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
And Manki is excused tonight.
Thank you. Item three, approval of September 18th, 2023, Village Board Meeting Minutes if correct or, and corrections if, mistakes if any. Looking for a motion to approve Amanda and Derek. Corrections, changes. Hearing on all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. A, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural manners, excuse me. Fifteen minutes provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Public comments? Thank you. Uh, item four B, presentation from OCA Media on 2024 budget request. Speak clearly into the mics, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Uh, I'm Paul Swicker. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the director of OCA Media. Uh, Andy, excuse me, Andy Wieland is Wieland, is our board treasurer. I'm sorry, vice president. I'll get there. Yeah. So for those who don't know my background, I've been a director at OCA for seven years. I have about forty years' experience in broadcast television. I own my own small production company. And, uh, excuse me, our staff at OCA wears a lot of hats. We find ourselves as IT techs, uh, video producers, teachers, researchers, streaming tech support, and that's on a good day. Um, I'd like to show a video clip of what we produced this past year that might give you a flavor for what we do and where it can go. Ready? Please. Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. So.
The game winner. Luke, that's gotta be the best ending to Oregon United in history, man. That's gonna be the best ending to an Oregon game in history that I could have ever seen.
So, that gives you a little feel for what we could achieve, uh, not on a daily basis, but, um, that was picked up by ESPN Sports Center and went viral, had millions of views. And what made that special to me, whoops.
Hang on.
What made that special was the fact that Oregon High School students who we trained were operating in cameras that night, and those were student announcers that you heard. Um, for Luke Mars, who's a senior this year, that was a pretty good way to begin his dream of becoming a professional sports broadcaster. Um, we've inc- we've, uh, continued to increase in number of programs we produce here in Oregon, and, but we haven't changed our staff numbers since I started working for OCA. Four part-time staff record and stream events, supply two cable channels on two different networks, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five days a year. Our dedicated staff work long hours and often found ourselves, find ourselves working late, supervising high school staff, or troubleshooting the many events we stream for our community. Streaming comp- events can be complicated. Uh, each year, we cover and share about three hundred local events, and that does not include the many smaller events that producer Frank Caruso attends and shares on social media. I can't believe there's that many events in this town, but this place has got a lot going on. We're able to cover all these events because we have OHS students that we train and we are able to put to work. Currently have seven employees on our, as, with us as a on need, on needed, as needed basis. And some of these have, some of our students have gone on to study broadcast production, and I've actually heard one say that they're so far ahead of their students, and in some aspects, they're teachers, that they think they should be teaching it. Um, currently, twenty-seven hundred people subscribe to our YouTube channel. That's almost a quarter of our population. Each month, about sixty new subscribers join and follow our YouTube channel. That's a twelve percent increase over last year. We use that data from view, uh, viewership YouTube data for our fundraising efforts, and local business sponsors receive PBS-style recognition for our bro- during our broadcasts. We also receive donations from community members who believe that what we do is important. This year, several new businesses in town joined our re- joined our renewing sponsors, and we expect to reach over eighteen thousand in sponsorship revenue, which is above our twenty-three X, uh, goals that were provided in the packet. Um, video production services are another source of our income and, uh, have produced several videos for groups in the area over the years. And recently, we just did a bike safety video working with the police department here and the Oregon Wellness Coalition. Our Board of Directors believes that our efforts to offer transparency in government is necessary and important. Having over a hundred views of village board mem- meetings is not uncommon. Can you imagine if then not that number of people were here tonight? Our community is involved and interested in knowing what is happening here in Oregon. Each month, we produce several local programs, and our latest effort providing information for our community is our new talk show, Let's, Let's Talk Oregon. But our most popular programs are Panther Sports Broadcast. So last Friday's, uh, football game had twenty-one hundred views on YouTube, and last year, we produced sixty-five varsity games with over fifty-one thousand views. For a village of this size, you won't find many stations like ours producing multi-camera bo- broadcasts, but with our student staff help, we do that every Friday night. There's a home game. Uh, passports productions have been awarded top honors in, uh, a couple of years in a row, competing in, uh, local, uh, I should say in statewide, uh, contests against larger groups than ours. And, uh, moving on, the Oregon School, Oregon School District saves us a considerable amount of money and renting us office space in the high school, and that location also helps us hire and train students and streamline our productions there, because there's many events going on at the high school that we cover. Uh, we've also streamlined our workflow using technology, innovative approaches to production, and are keeping up with technology, which is always a challenge. But purchasing broadcast-level equipment has made a huge difference to our operations. Um, our small staff is dedicated and skilled, and I consider myself lucky to have these people who do an amazing job in a complicated field. We're unlike, uh, community access stations, uh, in the area in that we are not part of the municipal departments. Uh, we're not a municipal department at all. We operate on the franchise fees that you receive and choose to give to us, and, uh, with the additional monies that we're able to raise. But without those fees, we wouldn't continue. We wouldn't continue to provide any of these services to our community. Selling a few DVDs, providing occasional video production service, soliciting donations, and asking for business sponsorships on an annual basis is not a long-term solution for our operations. Franchise fees will most likely continue to decrease, decrease, and we will need to replace that income. Finally, our Board of Directors is discussing revenue strategies for long-term solutions, and we hope that the village will work with us to allow us to continue to provide quality video services here in our community. Thank you for listening to that long summary.
So as Paul said, I'm Andy Wieland. I'm the vice president of, uh, Oregon Community Access, and I think that's, that's an important name, right? We're, we're providing access to the community to what's going on in the village, and that's meetings like this or school board meetings where people have access to what our, uh, representatives are doing. Uh, I think that's super important. But there's actually an added, an added bonus, and it's actually kind of a hidden jewel, I think, in our community, Oregon Community Access, because it, it is working toward connecting people. Some of the pieces that, uh, Frank Caruso does, um, connect people, get to know your neighbor type situations, as well as just bring people, um, up to speed with different things that are going on in our community. So, um, there's a lot of, uh, added value to, to what Oregon Community Access does, and it promotes the community and the surrounding community as well, which I think is a, a great value. So tonight, we're asking for a thirty-eight hundred dollar increase. It's, it's not a lot. Uh, the budget is fairly small, and I can tell you, and you know this, um, it's, it's all going into staff. Staffing is our, is our major expenditure and something that we are struggling with, just like everybody else in, in, uh, in government and in, in the, and, um, private businesses as well. So, um, with that said, uh, I think Paul and I are here. If anybody has any questions, uh, we'd be happy to answer them. I know you're a little limited with that, but.
Can't really take questions or comments. Oh, okay. All right. Please, questions, comments? Uh, Carly?
I just think it's remarkable the way that you have kept costs as low as you have, and when I look at the projected increase from one, one cycle to the next, you know, there was a, there was a sizable jump from twenty-two to twenty-three, but other than that, it seems like it's been really minute when we think about budgets in general, and I commend you on that and think, uh, you're doing a remarkable job, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tom, you look like you want to say something, and I, well. I'm probably in a unique position here, since I, I probably helped them develop all of those numbers and information. I, I think the OCA provides a really valuable source to our community. Um, the work that Paul does is, you, you, it's, it's, I've had the opportunity to compare it side by side with other community access stations, and it's so far beyond what, what anybody else is doing, and with a budget that is much, much, much smaller. They, they squeeze every, every penny they can get out of it. Um, I will say, and I, this kind of follows on Andy's comment, uh, OCA is, um, looking hard at how to develop additional revenues. It's an extremely, uh, tough thing and hard to figure out. Um, I think further down in your package, there's some information about the fund that this is drawn from, and I think we're gonna have to have some discussions relatively soon about that fund. Uh, I think they're refined this year, but I think it's, it's a shortlist kind of item.
Uh, Amanda?
I'm also on the OCA Media Board, so, uh, but I, you guys are doing a great job, um, really, and, you know, Paul, you're on call like twenty-four seven, all the time. Um, and, you know, if, if some student has a problem with something, you're the person, you get called, or Josiah, the, the two of you, but, um, yeah, I mean, what you do with the budget you have is amazing, so it's great.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you, Paul and Andy. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of seven hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Looking to a motion for this, please. Uh, Tom and, uh, Carly, questions? Comments? Derek?
I have one about, uh, vendor number one, two, nine, nine, eight, on invoice two, four, one, three, zero, and two, four, two, one, six, art fund topsoil for Tin Man. Um, I see two identical ones for six hundred and seventy dollars. I'm assuming that came out of the public art fund, but is that a misprint, or did we get billed for it twice, or?
Probably not. I, we can. It's two different invoice numbers, so, yeah, it was probably two loads of topsoil.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, it does come out of the art fund. Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Bealow?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
And Beshin?
Yes.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, item six, consent agenda, uh, staff room recommendation, motion to approve the consent agendas as presented. Uh, Amanda and Derek, questions, comments? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item seven, reports of boards, commissions, and committees, and are for discussion and are possible action. A, one, presentation from Rettler Corporation on the twenty-twenty-four JC Community Park Phase Two Redevelopment Project in consideration of construction costment and project scope.
All right, I'll kick this one off a little bit. Um, so as you know, we're wrapping up phase one of the park, um, the concession stand. I don't know if you mean has had a chance to look over and see it going up. We have a roof going on this week, which is, or the roofing going on this week, so it's really starting to take shape and, and look nice out there. And that'll wrap up phase one, um, hopefully in the next month, two months, uh, with the final and the construction of that. Um, at the, uh, strategic planning, uh, meeting, which was in April, March?
August.
The strategic planning?
July.
Okay. Just seems like April, July, okay.
This year.
Yes, exactly. We asked you to, uh, what your feelings were on JC Park, and you said, we want to come back and we want to do JC Park immediately with the design this fall and the construction, um, bidding in, uh, December, January this year, and, um, construction this next year. And, uh, so we've, we've been working with Rettler Corporation, obviously, for the last couple of years. They've done a phenomenal job on things. Um, and they had put together kind of a phase two or completion budget for that, and that came out higher than what we had planned on borrowing for that portion. So, um, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Ross here a little bit, because, um, he'll kind of explain what our proposed direction would be, and it really does end up with kind of two options. One is, we kind of stay with the borrowing plan and split this into a phase two and a phase three, with phase three being the lighting, and then, um, or we borrow more money, and I think staff recommendations has been, and the park board recommendation was, uh, to split into phase two and phase three. But Ross will talk a little bit about kind of the, the phasing of the project. I'll pull up that plan, and then he'll talk a little bit about how we'll still include portions of the lighting plan in phase two, so.
All right. Well, thanks, Jeff. On behalf of Rettler Corporation, again, I'm Ross Rettler, I'm a landscape architect and project manager with Rettler Corp. Speak right into the microphone really loud. On behalf of Rettler Corporation, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to work with you over the last couple of years. Uh, we got to work with you on Highlands Park, got to work with you on the first phase of JC Park. This relationship and working with Jeff and Elise is one that we've been, it's been very wonderful for us. So we appreciate the opportunity to be at the table today to talk a little bit more about the second phase of JC Park. Um, the one thing I'm gonna start off by saying is if we move into the next phase of design here to finish off the park, um, permitting is one thing that I wanted to touch on right away. Uh, our DNR permit that's in place for stormwater management, uh, will remain in place with the state of Wisconsin. The one thing we will need to do is we'll need to go back, uh, to Dane County and, and renew our vows per se with them to make sure that we're, uh, good with their stormwater process. So from a design standpoint, we've worked into the second phase. When we did all the permitting for phase one, we did work a lot of the design into, uh, from phase two into phase one so that everybody knew what we were doing. But I think it's important to touch on right away kind of what's included as part of the phase two plan. So as part of phase one, we got all the parking done, the multi-use field, three of the baseball diamonds, a pickleball complex. That was really cool, a really cool addition to the project. What's gonna happen as part of phase two is that we would complete the fourth diamond, the three-hundred-foot, uh, baseball diamond in the northeast configuration. Um, to the northwest of that, we would be, uh, I'm sorry, north, yeah, northwest is gonna be Stotts Field. So, uh, Jeff had called us, I don't know, about a month ago and said, we need to look at some potential improvements for Stotts Field as well. So we'd be redoing the infield there, providing a movable outfield fence, and then also providing a new scoreboard to match the scoreboards that are at the other baseball fields as well. To the northeast of the, uh, quad would be, um, the multi-use, there's a multi-use soccer field there as well. That would be irrigated and underdrained. And then directly north of the ball field, that is just gonna be recreated as green space to be flexible for soccer as well. We will not have irrigation or underdrain in that location. Um, nearest and dearest to Elise's heart, we got a new, uh, flexible playground space for not only our young kids, but some of our elderly folks as well. Uh, so a new porn place, um, uh, playgrounds surface there, with some concrete around that. And then to the south of the complex would be a new sixteen-hundred square feet maintenance building for you guys to be able to store all your equipment at. Um, the biggest question tonight is we look at the budget overall, um, when we had looked at a number of three point five million roughly, that included all of the lighting for the project. Um, you guys have the decision to make as to whether or not we'd want to include that lighting infrastructure now or in the future. But the one thing in talking with Jeff that I recommended is I want to design this project and be done for you guys. So as I design it, I want to make sure all of that lighting is factored into our design, and that's the way I've set up my proposal to you now. It's your choice to whether or not you would want to bid and build that lighting as part of phase two. But I think it's important for us to make sure all the infrastructure that you need as part of this, we'll call it phase two, and if there is a phase three, I want to make sure all of that infrastructure is in the ground and accounted for as part of our design. And as I had put together my proposal to Jeff, I had included.
Which they haven't seen yet.
Yep. I had included, um, design to complete the full scope of work as part of the project, whether there's a phase three or not.
And it should be noted that when we did phase one and, and the work's already done, we actually did all the conduit, all the sizing of the, the electrical source. If you go out there and walk around today, you'll actually, people say, what are these posts here? And those are the, the foundations and the conduit in place for the musco lighting to be able to put that in at a later date. So this is kind of how we've progressed to this part, to make sure that we're not coming in tearing up perfectly good ground only to put something in at a later date.
As you guys look at the estimate that we had put together, I actually went back to an athletic field, uh, lighting vendor and looked at, um, updating the lighting numbers so we knew exactly what we were dealing with for not only the baseball field, the multi-use field to the east, and then also the pickleball courts. We, we updated all of those numbers, so we had roughly eight hundred thousand in for lighting the phase one and now the third or the fourth phase two field. We had two hundred and fifty thousand in for the multi-use soccer field, and then other eighty-five thousand in for the pickleball courts. So as you look at backing out those items, if you were to take those items out of the phase two scope of work for lighting, I'm still going to need to get the conduit and infrastructure and the ground that we need to add those in the future, so that we're not ripping up your site to put in lighting in the future. Um, as we look at that number, it was just off the top of my head today, Jeff, but I was thinking we'd probably want to back or bring in at least a hundred and fifty thousand into the project as an electrical allowance to be able to support that infrastructure, so. Um, as we look at the estimate, I don't know if you want me to go through it in detail, Jeff, but I think the way we typically do this is we break it down into all the earthwork, all the erosion control, mobilization of the contractor. We've taken all of our documents that we developed as part of phase one and updated all of your utility pricing to make sure we have all the storm sewer, uh, infrastructure included. We got the pavement structure from the one walkway you'll see to the north that we're connecting. Um, we broke out a line item specifically for the three-hundred-foot baseball field, with all the amenities included as part of that. The, the natural turf, uh, multi-use field to the northeast, our playground area, um, both the, the smaller kids area and then the adult playground area, um, included the Stotts Field improvements that we had talked about, Jeff.
Right.
Um, and then all the, all of the other, uh, miscellaneous landscaping items where all of your lighting.
And we're gonna, just a few points on the Stotts Field is, um, you know, when we get done with all of this, you know, there's kind of that feeling like everything in this entire square here, here is essentially fairly new. If you notice, we've been making upgrades to the bathrooms in the pavilion out there as well and stuff. So everything's kind of had a facelift, if you will, um, or a complete reconstruction. Um, and so we're looking at Stotts Field and really done planned on doing anything major with that, other than replacing the infill mix. But by this chain link fence that's out there now, it's a non-movable, it's non-removable, you can't do anything with it, and it kind of blocks off this whole area. Our thought with a mu- a movable outfield fence would allow us to pull that out of the way during non-baseball time periods and utilize this area here for an additional playing field, so an additional soccer field that's not being able to be used at this time. So it, it gives us that flexibility to be able to utilize this and actually create an additional field that isn't there right now. And as you know, we, um, soccer is needing more fields. Every, everyone kind of needs more playing fields, uh, spaces, so that's the reason for that. And we just had the very first tournament in the weekend that utilized, were you out at JC Park at all, or, um, anybody out at JC Park over the weekend? I think it was used by a lot of people, but not a single person in this room. Um, but, uh, anyhow, it was just nice to be able to see that being used and, uh, that's starting to come together over there.
So I think there's some important decisions to be made at this point from your, from the village's standpoint, but I think the biggest thing for me in talking with Jeff is I really do want to complete the plans for you guys, so that whether that lighting gets put in now or gets put on the shelf for later, I want to be done and have a, uh, comprehensive set of plans for you folks so that we're, we're giving you everything you need to finalize the project, so.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ross and Jeff. Questions or comments? Looks like Tom's got a hand up there.
So if we left the lighting in, would the, when would the lighting actually be installed?
If, if the lighting were to be left into the project and funded through this second phase, we'd get it in this, this coming summer. That would all be constructed this coming summer, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four.
It'd be installed in twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
And deferring it, we'll install it in.
Whenever it's determined to be funded. Yeah. The hope, the hope was always, and, and I, so when we, when I got the numbers from Ross, I obviously kind of had this like, oh, this is gonna continue. And because things have just gone up in, in cost, uh, dramatically over the years. And, uh, but I, I got to thinking, I said, you know, it's important that we finish the park, that we get it to where the entire park is usable, playable. Um, it won't be like at night, but, um, we don't have a lot of, it's, we're not like the high school that has a lot of night games and all that type of stuff. I mean, softball obviously uses a Kaiser, but we have lights for them, um, over at those fields and stuff. But it'll be nice, but kind of the feeling was, is it'd be nice just to finish this, get a lot of playing done on it, and then hopefully in the next year, two years, we could look at, um, hope, maybe by then we'll have more park fund fees. You know, we're, I mean, we have a very strong park impact fee that comes through every built, time a building permit is issued, and we have a lot of multifamily coming in, um, a lot of, uh, single-family homes, there's continued to be strong, so a couple of years, and we might be sitting on another three or four hundred thousand dollars in our park fund.
Carly, then Lynn.
Um, Jeff, you kind of answered the question, but I wonder if you could speak specifically to how much does not having lighting limit the park use? You said there's not really much at night at this point, but.
The only, the only lighting we have right now in the park, um, is the path lighting and the parking lots. Um, those are all lit, and so that does allow kind of that later afternoon, dusk, and early morning type of, uh, use. But, uh, yeah, I mean, this time of year, it's getting dark around, what, seven-thirty? You know, and then a little bit when we fall back, it'll even be a little worse and stuff, so, yeah.
Uh, Lynn and Amanda?
I just wanted to add, as the representative of the park board, um, the park board sat for a while to discuss this. We asked a lot of these similar questions. Um, and they felt like, um, based on some, some of the feedback from the surveys that have been given out, that there's a lot of other need um, for, for funds for other parks and other facilities, that, um, they felt very comfortable moving this to a phase three. Um, and that kind of what Jeff is saying, that, you know, the, the darkest time of our year, which is winter time, isn't really when this park was to be used anyway. So, um, they were very comfortable with it, so I thought I would just throw that in there, that the park board spent some time on it and felt like it was, um, feasible to go to phase three.
Uh, man?
Um, that answered some of my questions. Uh, I was just gonna say, have you had any pushback from the, the sports organizations? Are they comfortable with this too? Or, I mean, I'm sure they don't love it, but.
Um, we've, I've not received anything, you know, and, um, and I kind of was sure if we were gonna have the pickleball contingency here tonight, asking about that, because, uh, guarantee they'll be here sometime, but, uh, um, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing.
Phil?
Uh, please, Elise.
One other point, um, at the park board meeting I'm recalling that I brought up is that, uh, well, obviously some of these fields are playable now. Um, the fields in phase two wouldn't be playable likely until probably summer. Summer to fall of twenty five. So if it was decided to break the projects into two and have the lighting. You know, maybe we do the borrowing in the spring of twenty five, they get installed in the summertime that could line up with kind of everything being playable. Um, without a lot of mistime, obviously there's other playable fields right now that wouldn't have. Lighting kind of in that interim time. But just another point to bring up because it does, you get to watch grass grow for about a year. It's very exciting. So do that again.
Thanks, please. Derek.
So I'm definitely, I'm in favor of kicking the lighting down the road a little bit, um, just kind of based on what Elise just said. The most important part of about this project is getting the fields in and playable for the kids. Um, I do appreciate the removable fence along Stotts Field, and I do have a question about that. Um, as far as. When it's installed and when it isn't, um, and I guess storage of it, how does that kind of sit into the public works plan?
It's kind of a cool thing. Um, if I would have anticipated this, I would have a picture, but. Uh, DeForest did their complex and they actually have. Uh, like two sets of these movable. They're actually towed with a small mini tractor or something like we have. Um, and they are towed into place and then. Uh, a person goes behind him and then just kicks down these little like. Feet, if you will, and it just fixes it there. And then when they're ready to move, they flip them back up and they they can tow it kind of like a. Uh, a baggage cart behind at the airport where you see them towing it's that kind of uh. Train, if you will, behind it. But but it's not, I thought the same thing I thought is it like posts you stick in the ground and. Have to pull out. No, it's an actual movable type of 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 outfield fence.
Thank you, Jeff.
Like I say, however, we can squeeze more fields into a limited area. I appreciate it. So, thank you.
See if I find a picture of it or something.
Okay, so uh, we have two options for motions here. One, I essentially. With and without the lights is uh, I guess to boil it right down to uh. Essence.
I would make a recommendation for our motion on motion number one, two direct staff to split into two phases. Uh, exclude lighting from phase two design.
Okay, Amanda for second. For the discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Thank you, Ross, Jeff and Elise.
And so I'll be bringing um, at your next village board meeting, I'll be bringing back the proposal from Ross uh, that. Matches that design prop uh, part and. We just cut them loose.
I think the the good news is that my proposal to you is less than what's in the staff report, so.
Yes, he called me right away. He goes, those aren't the numbers. So they went the right direction.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you, Ross.
I will, I will say that we've been very pleased with the the comments we get back, Ross, uh, on the park and the facility and the layout. As you know, we went through. How many iterations on that? I mean, it was. Many, many final iterations, but um. When you walk around out there, if you haven't had a chance to go out there and look at the fields and hopefully once you get the construction of the. Next spring is when we'll start to see everything kind of better because we won't be fighting as much construction over there and and actually have tournaments going. Stuff, but they've done a really nice job. Their, your staff was out there, did make sure things were constructed well and right. It's appreciated.
Same scope work and the same process moving for that phase. We're not on phase two. We'll be there outside overseeing construction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seven B Oregon area fire EMS district fire station committee one. Consideration of a vacated village hall property. One seventeen Spring Street. In relation to district facilities planning. Think we have uh, Clint Chief Linsmeyer here. I'm sure if he wants to. Come up, I'm not uh, who's, you're taking the lead on this, Derek or?
I think Derek is taking the lead.
Okay, well, you know. You don't have to talk cheap, you know.
I'm gonna try to stay very limited.
I actually asked Chief Linsmeyer here tonight, just in case there's any blanks that I couldn't fill in. So. Um, I don't know if Martin, if you want to review your memo before we kind of dig into this. It was a pretty extensive what you had in there, so.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add on the background of just the. The request to be here, but um. My understanding is the, as we heard last week at the joint meeting that the district is looking at. Um, its future facility needs and an obvious. Uh, option is to look uh, south of their current facility and expand into where uh, the village, the old village hall currently is. And uh, in my memo, I just put together some some thoughts on um, some different angles of. How you may want to think about this in terms of downtown planning, um, sale of the property, configuration of the property. The uh, planning process that the district will go through, any agreements or understandings that maybe we need to have between the district and the village. And then um. You know, what sort of impacts it might have on other ideas, economic development. Or if it's not this option. What kind of expense will we incur if we have to build somewhere else? Um, and so there's going to be a lot of different. Uh, policy questions and perspectives to look at this. And uh, so this is the first crack at it for the village board to have that conversation.
Good thinking, Martin. Go ahead, Derek.
Again, thanks for the very comprehensive memo on this, Martin. Um, it filled in a lot of blanks even for me. Uh, the one, I guess, point on this memo that I feel is missing at the, at the moment is um. At the. Meeting for the building committee. There was a twenty twenty three incidents report map of. Uh, where the majority of the calls within the fire district happened. And I would just say that part of this needs to come down to public safety. And quick, how quick the response times are to the district. And if you look at that big red dot, that is, that's the heart of the village right there. So. Yeah, for the good folks at M C A Media. Um, so I think the public safety aspect is a little bit absent on Martin's otherwise very comprehensive memo. I think, you know, a big portion as far as the village is concerned that his point number seven with the the cost savings. To the village, I mean. We're looking at. A twelve million dollar placeholder for the. Build out of the new fire station right now on our C I P. If we do decide to. Acquire land and move this, I mean, I gotta imagine the cost is going to. Vastly exceed that twelve million dollar placeholder and uh, where we look at with our senior center and library. We're building a lot of hundred year projects. The fire district seems to be of the opinion that. We can meet our villages' needs merely by renovating and remodeling what may otherwise. Be a building that we're not sure what to do with. Um, there's extensive repairs that would be needed at village hall. Uh, whether or not a developer took over that process is a a big question mark. So those are just things that we need to. Kind of be cognizant of. What the district building committee is kind of looking for at this point is just direction. If the. Building is feasible to be placed downtown. Is the village going to work with the district? To make that happen. Um, as far as division of land and how much space. Is needed from that kind of remains to be seen. It's early stages, but we also don't want to put in a whole lot of planning for downtown if it's a straight out no from the village board anyways. As far as the space needs analysis that Martin had alluded to, uh, we obviously haven't approached that yet. That may be something on the horizon in the near term, but we're not there yet. Chief, I'm doing a lot of talking. Do you have any gaps to kind of fill in there as far as space needs goes?
No, I think, I think Derek, both yourself and.
Chief, can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
No, Derek, I think you and Martin both both hit it right, you know, nailed square on the head basically as far as our needs and what the district is looking at doing for long term and for a fifty year build. That kind of stuff. Keep in mind that that building that we're currently in today is about twenty three years old. And I'm not sure a hundred percent what they told or sold it how they did years ago. Phil, you were probably part of that when that building was built. Was that a twenty five year building or a fifty year building? I'm not really sure. I've looked on. Back and a lot of the the information and that kind of stuff to really see what the projection was at that particular time. And I'm not too sure that they underestimated what they really needed. Uh, at twenty three years ago for where we are today with the operations and what we're doing and all that kind of stuff. Uh, again, you heard last week at our uh, at our district meeting when we ran all the townships in the village together. For the fire and EMS district, you see our numbers continually uh, uh, keep crawling and and. You know, the the demand for service that Derek is talking about. Again, another record month, last month, basically a hundred twenty nine, a hundred thirty calls. Just in EMS alone and majority of those calls are basically in the village of Oregon and that uh, red. Zone that you could say basically that Derek looked at tonight. One of the biggest things, you know, all of the, you know. Anytime it comes to money, everybody, you know, our district partners from our townships or and the village, everybody seems to be, that's when everybody seems to. Run astray and all that kind of stuff and have different thoughts and all that kind of thing. But good, good business practices is what I keep telling the townships. I keep saying the same thing to Martin and Elise every time I get a chance and to Phil. Uh, is basically, uh, you know, I don't think anyone in that in that fire district expects that land. From the village of Oregon to be gave necessarily for free to the fire district. I think that all those things can be on those hurdles can be addressed at that particular time. The biggest thing that we're looking at uh, is is doing down there. You know what? If I had, I've had other people call me up and say, hey, fire chief, what are you thinking? What, how much of that property are you gonna need and that kind of stuff? And at this point, my answer is basically that footprint of what that old village hall was, I would say, consider us touching all of that. And developing that for your downtown. What that looks like yet, we don't know, but until we even get an idea. That this is acceptable with the village board and this works uh, in the long term for the downtown of Oregon. You know, we'll get some folks in, we'll take some looks at it. I believe we can make it work and and all that kind of stuff. And like I told the our district partners last week at our meeting, basically, is this something you want basically? Uh, at the end of the day, uh, maybe we'll only have a tr- a fire truck or two sitting on the streets, but if you go through there in the summertime and nights, nice days now. More often than not, I would say we have apparatus out on the streets, uh, out in front of the fire station. Just about probably every day in nice weather. I think that's pretty fair to say. That kind of thing. That's something that you will probably see in the future. And if that's something that you don't want to see. Uh, fortunately, we got good neighborhoods where we can put trucks on tarmacs and put them out on the streets. And have people stop in and all that kind of stuff. We got the convenience of the schools. Uh, and I, you know, stone throw away that really worked good for public education classes and all that kind of stuff. So. All in all, I think it is a uh, is a, is a great place. Uh, there are things that always, you know, we always look at and and think about, as I told Martin. In the larger picture, training opportunities as far as a training division and some towers and so how we want to do that. And build all that out. That is not the location to uh, ask to put a training burn tower downtown and have smoke every day, that kind of stuff. But all of that kind of stuff, along with even second or third stations as the village of Oregon grows, maybe in a thirty or or forty year plan. Uh, beyond beyond that and out further, start looking at some of the cooperation uh, and maybe some consolidation efforts maybe. Uh, maybe in my, hopefully in my lifetime, probably not in my tenure of being fire chief here. But trying to work with the neighbors and trying to do some things larger term as the village grows and you start looking at some of these other boundaries. I think it's the right thing to do for the fire and EMS and some of us have been preaching it for a long time. Uh, maybe in, you know, fifteen years from now, we can have larger, larger territories instead of forty four square miles, maybe we can have eighty square miles. And we can have a couple of fire districts tied together and serving an area, but all that takes time to do and put together.
Thank you, Clint. Amanda.
Yeah, so I appreciate the memo, Martin, and uh, you know, you've been talking about this for a while, chief, at the meetings, trying to prepare the other municipalities. That are part of the fire EMS district for this uh, expenditure. And we're not looking at doing it like next year, right? This is a long, this is a ways off. The way I see it, the. We almost need two space needs assessment. To kind of hold it in our head because if you, if you expand the one you have. To the south where the village, the village hall used to be. Are you also going to need to expand the living quarters area for more personnel or is it? Just gonna be for bays for trucks and things like that? And then, you know, compare that with the space needs of building a new. Satellite station where you have to have sleeping quarters and kitchen and all these other facilities, you'd have to rebuild all those. So. I mean, the likely difference is going to be in the millions of dollars. So, you know. Personally, I'm open to saying, yeah, let's, let's talk about expanding it where the old village hall is now. But, you know, I don't know if you want to go through the trouble of doing two entire space needs assessments. Like what are we looking at here, I guess?
Yeah, and again, again, I could give you a a pretty good snapshot and I've kind of uh, told it to our planning group a a, like a, you know, a week or so ago, ten days ago. And basically it's back to uh, first and foremost, we're looking at one fire station to serve this this area for. An unseeable future and anything other than one fire station is hopefully some regionalization and consolidation all beyond that. So Mike Winch basically a few years ago asked me, fire chief, if you start putting remote satellites and standing them up. You're gonna need more people to to staff that. And that's correct. So those needs and those dollars and budgets will only continue to increase and grow and all that kind of stuff. So at the end of the day, basically taking your twenty three year old building, putting some added space on. For apparatus. A large training room and some sleeping quarters and some bathrooms on that second floor. So there would be two floors. It would not be as high as the 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 fire station that we currently have, but it would be two floors basically built out. Uh, across that apparatus bay with some living quarters and some training uh, in there. And with that, that's going to give us some growth that we can staff. Basically, if you go back to. Uh, the July meeting when we talked about some staffing plan where we start talking about four people on a particular night. Uh, four career staff with our, some of our volunteers and with some of our paid on call, paid on premise staff. So that we have overnight staffing in the neighborhood of about eight people particular night. Just on on the fire and EMS side. And again, that builds us out for the future needs where we're already trying to get those numbers and we're capturing them. That's the two ambulance calls and trying to have fire staffing. Two on each ambulance, four on a fire truck, you know? You need quite a few personnel pretty fast. If that addresses your question.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you.
Lynn.
I appreciate this. I think that it's worth going down the road to understanding what your space needs look like. I also, um. I'm looking at the the bigger red area as well, um, in my mind. Because I think that Triangle Park is going to be something we need to address as far as size goes. Um, I will say that I already enjoy having the fire district downtown. I, as a parent to kids, it's really nice to walk through and. Firefighters will let us look at the truck and let us go over. And I think it's a great way for community to see public safety right there. In a really approachable way. I think my concern, I, or my question to you is. If we build out Triangle Park and there is more activity, more traffic, more people parking in that area. Does that pose a concern to you? In terms of getting personnel out? Not. In a safety aspect, I guess, um.
Well, I think.
Yeah, like if there were a call at a, you know, sounds of summer event, you've got people and that's only gonna grow. Um, does that concern you? To come closer towards the park that could be expanding?
There's always the concern anytime you have more people, brings more risk of of uh, accidents, pedestrians, trucks, all that kind of stuff. So we we have that risk today. When you say you want to build a triangle park, that kind of like throws up some red flags in my mind because I really don't know what. That incorporates incorporates and what that's going to look like because I think you're pretty well. I hate to use the word landlocked already, but you really don't have. Much more that you can build out there in my particular thought process. Yeah, if you, if you think you're gonna build a triangle park, then that fire station is probably really not going to be located downtown.
So then I would wonder if we should have sort of a comprehensive. Space analysis and then maybe some guidance as to like what the downtown master planning might be looking like? Does that make sense sort of simultaneously?
Well, we're having a. That. Sorry.
Uh, Derek goes up.
I guess my thoughts on this are similar to Chief Linsmeyer's. The Triangle Park is somewhat landlocked already. As part of the conversations that have been happening for the build out of the fire district, there are. Kind of. Thoughts in the back of the mind of incorporating public spaces within the fire station to accommodate crowds for Triangle Park as far as event. Spaces and bathrooms and whatnot available to the park. So we can, you know, maybe get the porta potty out of there. Be a nice kind of way to go. As far as the. As far as the safety during those events, I agree with what you're saying. But I think the fire station itself, we need to kind of plan that for, you know, that the events that happen at Triangle Park are, you know, a percentage, a very small percentage of the time down there as opposed to the incident calls which are happening every day, day and night. So I think we kind of need to bear that in mind. I'd, I'd hate to plan a fire station based off of a small percentage of, of time where that land is a little bit busy. Because right now, it's already busy during the sounds of summer and the fire district has been able to navigate that without incident as far as I'm aware of. And just to kind of touch on Amanda's point too, as far as the, the remote district and the budget and the staffing, like Chief alluded to, it's not necessarily within the district budget right now for increased staffing if we were to have a remote station. I mean, we can look at that down the road, but right now, just building onto the current station allows us to keep our staffing levels kind of similar to where we're at. If we do do a remote station on top of the increased cost for that remote station, you're also going to have to work into the, into the district budget, the continued staffing in perpetuity, basically, so.
Yeah, and Lynn, going back to your question about your build-out of your, of the Triangle Park down there. And Derek is exactly right and I'll apologize for not bringing that up again because those are two things that people have talked to me for the last eighteen months already, maybe even twenty-four months, basically. One about using some of the bricks down the current village hall to tie that in somehow to the current fire station and they repurpose some or make that part of the downtown Oregon because they want some historic value out of that. And I said we could take a look at that, that would be no, no, no issues with that. And the other thing was, again, to have some public bathrooms on basically on the backside of the fire district to accommodate basically the, the activities that happen in the, on the backside of the fire department or on Triangle Park. And again, like I said at the meeting here a week ago with, with all of our townships, we need each other. The fire district needs the village and the, and the three townships. Anyhow, I believe that's the case. And Martin and I think that's the case, that we want to try to have everybody work together and make things, you know, incorporate and, and make it happening and all that kind of thing. At the end of the day though, the village board has basically got to make that decision if they want this added traffic and this stuff going on with the emergency service down there, or if you, if you're going to want the fire truck someplace else in the Village of Oregon. You know, that, that, that's pretty much where it is. Believe me, in some ways, some ways, I'll, I'll just tell you, as a Fire Chief and being a progressive person and trying to move things forward and all that, I should be in and basically tell you, I want to move everything. I want fifteen acres, I want a burn training tower, I want all this kind of stuff and I need fifty-five million dollars. That's what I should be telling you, but I'm not. I'm trying to tell you, this is what we, I think we can do because we can do these other things with our neighboring departments, I think, in the long term to be able to work with some of the staffing and other stuff. And I think we can make this fire station downtown work for you. But most people in my position will tell you that I am absolutely crazy for trying to, to build on and trying to make this work downtown. And I think it's something that we should look at and I, and, and try to do what I believe is the right thing is to try to keep that fire station in downtown, so.
Thank you. Uh, Carl, Lynn?
So it seems to me like this is something that's part of the bigger comprehensive picture and shouldn't be a standalone decision about where the fire station should go. We should be talking about it in terms of how the downtown is going to be developed because there is the possibility of, you know, pulling up concrete. You don't have to keep concrete in a place. So, so what, what do we want long-term? And is the fire station downtown the best place for it long-term and part of a comprehensive picture? Versus doing things in a hodgepodge kind of way, one thing at a time without considering the impacts on other, other decisions that we'll have to make.
Amanda.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, can, can this decision about whether or not we want to entertain this be kicked a little down the road to the downtown comprehensive planning that we're planning on doing in the summer of twenty twenty-four? Did I read that right? Master, master planning process for downtown in twenty twenty-four. Because that will give us a better sense, more public input than maybe, you know, allow people to kind of tell us their vision for downtown and then we can make a better decision. Can it wait, I guess?
You're looking for me for an answer for that?
Yeah, like, I mean, are you, you're, you know, I, I know this is a long range, it's a long process.
Twenty, twenty-seven is when the funding is basically in the capital plan to try to make things move along and all that kind of thing. So it's all about the planning and trying to put things together and trying to keep the district partners with the municipalities, the three townships in the Village of Oregon and trying to keep that forward movement as, as, as a, you know, as a possibility and all that kind of stuff. I would tell you that I see no movement and maybe Derek can answer this too. You know, I don't expect you guys to give us an answer tonight by no means. I, I don't think the district does. I think it's one of those things that it's laid out to you guys and, and, and ladies basically look at and to decide in a timely fashion. What that timely fashion is, I, I don't know. But I, from the district, district's perspective, if they don't think that that's on the, on the table, basically, they're going to start looking for some, probably some different property and looking at some different sites. And some of the townships are ready, like Derek said about looking at everything. Some of the township members would like to move this thing closer to one thirty-eight for some access of basically up and down the interstate and that kind of stuff. But the problems that come into being is, basically, is it going to be all right with the Village of Oregon to have the fire district not in the Village of Oregon and be our major contributing partner paying for a fire district with no sewer and water? Because we don't have sewer and water lines in an area that's ideal for the fire district. So a lot of these things have been talked about and all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of carts before the horse per se and different things that are kind of like circulating the wagons and all that kind of stuff. At the end of the day, I don't see the fire district doing nothing as far as spending money. I mean, we're not going to go and draw a whole bunch of plans and say, this is what we're going to do, spend. I don't care if it's, at least it doesn't want me to spend any money most days anyhow, but forty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars to have somebody come in, draw some contemporary plans, lay some stuff out and then just to find out later on, you guys don't want it downtown anyhow. It's not doing, the stewards of our money, really good business, correct? So that's why we just put this back to you folks and like I said it really nice and polite at the meeting a couple, a week ago and probably a year, a couple, a year ago and probably in July also, is just going back to, basically, you guys hold, you know, you, you, Village Board, hold the cards depending on how you want this to look at. And then you just kind of tell us where we go from there, so.
Thank you. Derek?
So I, I appreciate the thought of giving this the comprehensive look with twenty twenty-four. My apprehension with that is, Jennifer, when did we start planning the library?
I started in twenty eighteen, so the planning was started before my day.
Yeah, so, I mean, these projects take a long time to plan. We, the fire station build-out is scheduled on the CIP for twenty twenty-seven. So to kick this, and I mean, the fire station is no less complicated than the library. There's a lot of equipment that's needed, a lot of spaces that need to be filled in, a lot of Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted. I don't think we necessarily, I don't feel like waiting until the comprehensive plan for downtown is necessarily in the best interest of the district. As far as getting this project moving forward, personally, I'd like to see a decision probably made on this within the year, is, is my thought. And then, and I'm, again, like Chief said, we're not necessarily looking for a definitive answer tonight, but definitely something to continue discussion about.
Did you say within this year or within the next year?
I'm thinking twenty twenty-four summer is within the year.
Well, I would.
Within a year.
I, within, I'm sorry, within this year, I would like to have a decision made by the first, really. But that's, if I'm standing alone there, we can cross that bridge too.
Elise?
So, um, don't want to speak for you all, but what I'm hearing is it sounds like you guys are open to exploring what this could look like downtown, but obviously not making any commitments. I think the, the downtown master plan that we have in the CIP, we, there's no timeline yet. So we can put together RFP and everything, it's, it's flexible. I think we've kind of largely planned on probably spring doing the RFP and then that process probably running largely through the summer, wrapping up hopefully by, you know, late summer, early fall. But I think we'll have kind of a lot of these discussions and a direction on some of these points during that process. I think one thing, just having been tangentially involved in the library process and kind of shift and then now the senior center, center planning process too. Obviously, we've learned having an owner's rep is really helpful, but, you know, with the senior center, like you saw in our last meeting, we don't have a plan in front of you to say, this is exactly where it's going to go and these are, the doors are going to be and this is the driveway, it's a conceptual plan and kind of some big numbers and sort of a box of, okay, if we were going to build on to the fire station, we think we need approximately this much space. We think that we need to have, you know, all the bays facing Spring Street or we would need, you know, because there's a ladder truck, maybe it needs to be accessed from the south. Some of those kind of large numbers and general kind of guidelines, I think, would be helpful if the fire district could come up with some of that information by the time that we get to some of the, the downtown master plans. Because, again, I think if there's a way to make it work downtown, that needs to be kind of known while we're having all these discussions about what actual footprint might that take up and not, you know, setting things in stone. But, you know, maybe the green space in the park expands, maybe that parking lot shrinks a little bit. Maybe that driveway, you know, is moved or realigned and there's a lot of possibilities over there. The downtown master plan isn't, of course, just this block. It's kind of, will hopefully be the larger block and not just Villa Joan properties, but opportunities for redevelopment and events and gathering and all of that in the larger downtown district and intensifying downtown. So I think in order for all of us to be successful with our planning, if there's some amount of kind of work that could be done on the front end by the time that we get to that downtown master plan, I think that would be really helpful so that we can kind of set everybody up for a successful, more productive conversation instead of just kind of being at the same point where we are today.
Amanda.
Yeah, and also projections for how long we think that, that addition would last if we went that route? Because, you know, we don't want to have it built and then outgrow it in ten years. You know, it's, it's a big expense. If it's, if it's more effective to build new because we need to have that space for growth, then, you know, I'd want to know that too.
Yep, understandable.
Lynn.
I'll wait till you're done.
Thank you, Elise. I appreciate that information. I think what my concern is, is that we move along with making the fire district building bigger and then we mess with Triangle Park. And then Chief, you are at a situation where you're like, gosh, I wish I would have known that before I had really advocated that we stayed. Does that make sense? Like, it's two boats moving at the same time and I just want to be respectful of the fact that if we're going to mess with that area, that you know what that will look like so that you could say, hey, hold on, that doesn't work for my personnel or you're not going to be able to get people in and out of here very well. So that doesn't work for, just, I just want to be careful that we don't ignore that area. And I understand what you're saying, Elise, that we won't ever really know right now, but I think we should at least involve that conversation with the fire district partners to make sure that that entire thing has a game plan before we move forward pulling the trigger on anything building related.
Uh, Tom. Derek, you're next.
Yeah, I guess I'd start off by agreeing with Derek that I think it makes logical sense to see an expansion on the existing building. But I also agree with Lynn from the standpoint that, that Triangle Park as a venue is inadequate. I have not been to an event there that has not run out into the parking lot, whether it was the Sounds of Summer, whether it was the art fair, whether it was the police safety EMS event that was held there. Everyone has used every inch of those spaces. So what we've got is two competing things that are both inadequate in their current location. So conceptually, it, it makes economic sense to, to lean towards expanding that building. But how much or where and where you would divide the line and what would go where, I, I'm unprepared to really have an opinion.
Derek, and then Phil, by the way.
Well, I, I was, I was actually just going to say that I think, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief Linsameyer, we have enough to go on tonight as far as how to proceed, how to figure out where to go. But I will kind of say that in the end of, at the end of the day, it, it is going to come down to the, the dollars and cents of it. We are a district, not, we are not just a village entity when it comes to the fire district. And I have a feeling that, yeah, that some of the municipal partners may like to see it relocated, but some might see the price tag of that relocation and think to themselves, maybe not. So I, but like I say, I think at this point, we have adequate to, to go off of, to bring back to the board at another date.
The Chief and I have been talking about this probably since the day you started in twenty sixteen.
Probably so, Phil.
He would also tell you that we don't necessarily agree on this. There's a lot of good points made here and things that are, you know, that I've thought about. But not to get too, not to get too far in the weeds, Glenn, but would the intent be to have an aerial place in this new facility? And if so, would that then exit out towards Triangle and out onto Spring or would that be the plan?
Probably so, but there again, I'm not going to make that decision until we can really do some comprehensive look in at that whole large area down there. Just in general, you would think it's going to go to Spring, but again, not knowing what Triangle Park is going to look like and how that all lays in there, there may be some, you know, you might be able to have an engineer design something that an aerial would come out the south side of that, so. Don't know yet, to be determined.
All right. As far as Triangle Park, as, as Tom mentioned, and, and I, and I think I've talked a little bit, Elise, it's an adequate space and it's never going to become more adequate, I think, regardless of what we do down there. So whether or not that, you know, hinges in this decision, I think at some point, we're probably going to decide that a larger community spaces need somewhere, at least in my opinion. I'm, I'm very wary, and I think Amanda touched on this, of spending seven or ten million dollars downtown and then in ten years, it's again inadequate. And we decide to move, build a whole new station at another site, walking away from that investment. And I think that's where Glenn and I have gone back and forth quite a few times. I don't know the answer here, but I do firmly believe that we need to do the downtown master plan first. If we decide to go ahead with this and we fail to take into consideration what's going to happen with the community, with the Triangle Park, take into consideration what's, the impact of the fire station and, and without having those answers of what we're planning to do long-term and a master plan is, you know, theoretically for quite a while, but not having, you know, just focusing on one small part of downtown without looking at the overall picture, I, I think would be, you know, irresponsible. So from my standpoint, I don't think we can give any kind of an answer tonight. And I don't know that we'll be able to give any answer until we get done with the master plan, in my opinion. Elise, please.
One other thing I wanted to add slash ask, so I think with this planning effort, you know, I don't have any one particular firm in mind, but I think we'll probably want to have more of like an urban designer, a landscape architect, do more, get it's more of a, of site planning versus, you know, its feedback, but also kind of taking that into some more physical arrangements and options. Kind of like when we did the, the Civic Campus Plan a couple of years ago, there was a lot of, here's option A, here's option B. If the youth center is here, then, you know, these cards fall into place. I guess my other question for you all is, I think we have some flexibility in terms of when we would do that downtown master plan. So if that's something you would like to, maybe we do the RFP more kind of late this year into the winter and start some of that work at early twenty twenty-four, we might have some answers, you know? We can kind of shift that a couple of months forward if that's of interest to the board. We can kind of flip, we also have our bike ped plan, they don't have to happen, they don't have to be staggered, but that one's kind of also ready to go. So I think we had originally planned to have that one start first, but we could look at flipping those.
Uh just to just to further on that on that point, then that is is as part of that master plan, I think it needs to be the the what we're going to do with that village hall and that property without just saying it's either going to be part of the fire plan or not. But please, someone else had a comment?
I just have one comment, Phil.
Oh, sorry.
We'd be willing to sell you a boiler today. If you're if you're interested in buying it.
Do we want a boiler? No, we don't. We will pass on that boiler.
I could get you on the ground floor of a slightly used boiler.
Amanda. Oh, Derek.
No, I just want to say, Elise, I appreciate that input and I'll be bringing up at future agenda items, the RFP process.
Okay. Uh I I like that idea, you know, if we can move it up a little. I don't know that we need to flip flop, but I'm open to whatever, to having that conversation sooner if that helps this. Um also, um I really, we haven't talked much about this because it's a little further down, but the the MOU, um that would be an essential part because we're dealing with all these different municipalities. And I feel like, you know, whatever we decide, we're going to need an MOU that talks about, you know, the assessment of the property and the the site investigation and who pays for what and when all happens and a step by step, just like we did with the library, um you know, that that seems like no matter what we're doing, we're going to need something like that. And I I like that you're bringing it up now so that everybody will be on the same page with the process. But we'll probably need a separate committee. We did that with committee work um with the library. We'd probably need like an MOU committee for this fiery mess thing, so.
So um where are we at? Are we wait for the master plan or we should we? Have any action on this? Can we? Should we?
Um I I mean, if you want to have a motion, some kind of statement that you want to approve, um that would be fine. Um otherwise, we can base it off of direction, too.
Well, Derek, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to just see this based off direction. That way, me and like I mentioned earlier, me and Chief Linsameyer, I think I have enough to go off of to get some of the questions answered that were posed here today. And then we'll see uh how the process goes with the downtown master planning from there, where those two worlds collide and kind of go from there.
Sounds good. Carleen.
Can I just ask you a clarifying question, Derek? You said you were going to maybe bring up that whole idea of pushing the master plan for downtown sooner later in the agenda. Is that correct?
I I may bring up something in future agenda items, yes.
I thought I heard that. Okay.
It's a rumor. Okay, so I think Derek has what he's comfortable with and uh chief, um that you have direction and uh we can go from there.
Yep. No, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief, and thanks for Elise and Jeff for offering up the boiler. Item A.
You've already inspected it once when it was red hot. You know it can eat.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item A, unfinished business items for discussion, possible action. A. Resolution number 23 dash 31 approving a tax increment incentive agreement with CC Lane slash Oregon LLC for the position of a 1.5 million municipal revenue obligation for the CC Lane Apartments, mixed use project located at 831-871 Oregon Center Drive. This is something that's been forced numerous times, just really uh uh, you know, another piece of documentation. How's that? Can we get uh Amanda and Carleen? Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor in the capus aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carriers, thank you. Item 8B. Review proposal for scope of training sessions as part of the contract with Nehemiah Community Development Corporation. This, who what's wrong with this one?
You can, yep, sure.
So um some of you were on the board when the DEI committee was formed to uh take a look at the proposals that had come before the board around DEI training. And at Derek's Derek's very smart suggestion, we decided as an all white board, it probably wasn't the best thing for us to do. So we um we formed the committee, committee decided to go with Nehemiah. Um we have already had one class course session of Black History for a New Day, and the second one is currently happening. Um as that was also going on, the DEI committee uh met with the folks at Nehemiah who are putting together the training sessions for staff and board members and and um small group of, well, actually, a pretty substantial and influential group of um village employees and electeds that that was is based on the survey that folks filled out. And Candy and I had a conversation as well with the folks at Nehemiah. So we are now at stage at phase three. Um and there will be, if you go, what page is this? Page 68 in the packet. Um the training sessions will begin in in 2024, but there will be an open house, if you will, for staff on November 16th, where folks can uh have input and get questions answered about what that training will include. The course is not specifically part of the training. The course is something that we had 50 slots in and uh in the first session, there were 38 um people, uh staff, committee members, board members who participated. And right now, we have another 12. And so this is where we are in the process. And so asking for a motion to approve phase three as described in the notes here by Candy. Thanks very much for putting this together, Candy. It's a lot of back and forth and conversations, and she did a fabulous job of summarizing.
Move to approve as presented.
There a second? Glenn? Sure. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Um Carleen, maybe I'm just not reading it, or maybe it's not. Is this intended for board members as well, or is this just staff?
Um so the training sessions, I think if you look at the third bullet there is village staff. And and we also thought that there that village board members who wanted to be involved could also be involved, but they are not specifically named.
Great, thanks.
One of the things that they told us is that um 25 max is kind of the the magic number. You don't want to get more than that because then it's just becomes kind of unwieldy in conversations and and it a lot of the a lot of the effectiveness of the training depends on creating a a atmosphere where people feel like they can really say and what they're thinking and ask lots of good questions. And if you get it too big, you lose that that opportunity.
And well, is that an argument to maybe not have board members there so that staff feels like they can speak freely? I don't know how you guys feel about us, you know, board members attending or not.
Yeah, I would leave that up to.
I'm okay with not. I just.
I think the thought that we had was uh it sounds like the goal of this training is to equip managers, supervisors with um some new tools, some education that they can take back and share with their departments and their staff. Um and with board members, our thought was, well, that doesn't really help us if if that's the goal. Um but the other piece is board members turn over, right? They change over time. So um the goal for us is to equip the permanent staff with having that background, having the education, having the knowledge, and being able to share that with the rest of their staff and departments. And it wasn't really felt like village board members really played a role in that the goal of of that.
Fair enough.
Worth a comment? Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve then? Sorry?
You have a motion.
Oh, sorry. I was out.
I have Mello and Daniel, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead and finish, Amanda.
Yeah. Um so uh any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thanks, Amanda. Item nine, new business items for discussion of possible action. A presentation and review of 2024 draft municipal budget. And we had uh one of Martin's uh extremely comprehensive memos. He might add.
Yes. So yes, you have your you have the draft budget, total draft budget in your packet, along with uh a narrative and and description of the various different components and and things that are in the budget and what made it up and how we got to where we are right now. Um.
Martin?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. Can you speak a little bit closer to the mic? I think people are having an issues hearing.
Yep. So for this meeting, uh the first time we put the budget in front of you, we uh typically do a couple of things. We just look at the context of the budget overall, how it came to be. Um we'll recap the CIP, which we approved in uh the summer. We'll look at the debt service budget and we'll look at the general fund budget. Uh so I'll just try to keep it fairly brief while touching the high points and highlighting some things to to keep an eye on. Um but certainly you have all of the information that you need here for the draft budget. So you're going to be reviewing this over the next 45, 50 days until the end of November. Um so if you have questions or you find something in your review over these next few weeks, um feel free to reach out, ask a question, contact department heads, um myself, Lisa. Um so you're going to have some time to to kind of chew on all of this information. Um so we'll continue on our through our process here. Um at the next meeting, we'll cover all of the different funds that aren't covered tonight. If there's any changes or things that we need to go over, we'll go over those. Um because we're still working on the budget, there's still things that are changing, still some numbers that we're getting, um and then that sort of thing. So if we're we're at a good point at the next meeting where the budget is largely where we think it's going to be, uh we'll we'll go ahead and publish our public notice and uh we'll hit the if we need to, if we're not in a good place and we need to have some more conversations, we can always set some more meetings. Uh but we got to get to that October 27th date. Uh that's the deadline to get our public notice in the paper and so that we can have the budget approved by November 20th. And you can see the rest of the schedule there. If there's anything for the 6th and then the 20th, we have our hearing and any final changes and then approval. So I guess big picture stuff. Um I always like to start with the property tax. Uh the budget isn't just property taxes, but it is probably the component that the public cares about the most and elected officials tend to care about the most, too. Um so it's just a good place to start, get a lay of the land. Um so if you uh have been involved in local government in Wisconsin, been a few been through a few budget cycles, you know all about the the property tax levy limit law. Um of course, local governments cannot just uh increase property taxes however they want at their own discretion. Uh the only way that we can increase it um is by uh new construction value. So your community has to be growing in newly constructed value in order for you to be able to raise your property taxes. Uh and so for the Village of Oregon, uh this is sort of what this has looked like over the last few years. Um and the percentages are the increase to levy for for new construction. So we've done pretty good. We're a growing community. We've been able to increase our base levy there by 2%, 2 and 1/2, 3%, which is is decent. Of course, if you look at the annual CPI inflation, you'll see that it's become a little bit more challenging increase in in recent years because of increases to prices and employee costs. Um so that is the the basics of the levy limit. Um of course, it kind of puts local governments in a box. Um and you have to kind of do what you can within that box. Uh there's also a a disincentive for not quote unquote taxing to the max. So if you don't take all of the property tax levy limit that is allowed for you with new construction, uh it is a use it or lose it proposition, basically. Um so if you came back the following year, well, let's say in one year, you decided as a body that we want to keep the tax rate flat, or we want to decrease taxes, that's a priority for us, and you didn't take all the levy that you were allowed, the following year, you have lost most of what you could have had. So let's say something happens the following year and you need some money, it's gone, basically. Uh so there is a disincentive to not taking it. Um there is risk in not taking it. Now, you can, there is uh in the law, an ability to claw back some of it the following year. And then there's also uh an ability to claw back some of it over five years. But for most communities, especially growing communities, you will never qualify for that five year clawback because there's uh certain strings attached that just it won't happen. Uh so again, it's take what you can get, use it, uh or risk never having it again. The other thing that I added in here is a little bit about uh inflation. Uh obviously, inflation is affecting everybody, slowing down a little bit, but of course, so up here, it's still at at uh 5.4%. So um and of course, we're a growing community. So um you know, if if the the primary source of revenue that we have to fund government services uh is only able to go up to 2 and 1/2, maybe 3% and your inflation is 5, 8, 4.7. And then you're also a growing community. So your services are not just staying the same. Your services are having to expand because there's just more people. You get into quite a bit of a crunch with with that with your numbers. Um and so of course, in recent years, last year, we did the wheel tax, we did the streetlight fee. So that created some flexibility, created some uh some movement to 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 work within. And then this year, um we have the state shared revenue increase, which was first in a generation change to that law, and I can get into that in just a little bit. Uh but so I just wanted to to highlight sort of the context of sort of what we're up against when we start the budget process and what that looks like. So for 2024, uh you can see our equalized value here, uh our equalized value, the total value of uh property and improvements in the village went up 15, almost 15% from 1.5 billion to 1.8 billion. Some of that is new construction value, but a lot of it is appreciation of existing value. So you probably noticed that in your home values going up considerably. Um so you can see the allowable levy limit increase that we have from last year to this year is $165,000. And so you can see the the movement in the limit from 5.6 to 5.7 million. Uh so that's sort of our base levy. So that's the levy that we use to fund government services. That's about the 70% of what we have to uh fund everything that we do. Uh and so of course, when you have a 7.8 million dollar government service operation and you only get $165,000 to divvy up, that goes very quickly. Um so with the levy limit law, there are some exceptions. So the biggest exception is debt service. So you are allowed to levy property taxes to cover your principal and interest payments on your debt service all the way up to your legal limit, uh which we talked about a lot during the CIP process. Uh and so that's what we do here. So we levy 3.3 million, or we have proposed 3.3 million to be levied for debt service, principal and interest payments uh in this year's budget. And that's up from 2.8. Uh and I have a little blurb in here about even this has increased pretty dramatically in the last five years, but we've done some things. We've done some generational facility projects with the library, the village hall, JC Park, other park projects, um street projects, those sorts of things. So um there is an incentive to use debt for your capital projects because you can get the taxes you need to pay for it. Uh there are also some other smaller minor levy exemptions that are able to be used um sort of infrequently and usually not to great gain. Um so a common one for uh at least for the Village of Oregon is annexations. So you are allowed to add a little bit of uh property tax levy when you annex a property from an adjacent town. Um last year, that was $683 that we were able to increase our levy by through annexations. Um and then another pretty common one, um is. And then another pretty common one is if we take on a service that was done by a different government agency or we give away a service, we actually have to decrease our taxes in that scenario. But if we take on a, a service, we can add some levy for taking that on. So here, we're going to be taking on the jurisdictional transfer of Janesville Street from the county to the village after the project's completed this year. So we have fifteen thousand dollars added in for annual maintenance of that street. We've been able to do that. Last year we did fifteen thousand for North Main Street when that project was completed. And then a couple of years ago, we did Jefferson Street coming out of the downtown. So we can take that on, we can add a little bit there. And so you can see the total property tax levy allowed is nine point one million. And that's up from eight point four million, about seven point seven percent. So that's how property taxes get calculated. Again, your levy limit is you get what you get. And if you don't use it, it goes away. And then your debt service, you have to cover your debt service payments and then you take whatever exceptions you can get to add on to, to your levy. Moving on, you can see where the property taxes get divvied up into our different funds. So again, you know, our general fund is, are operating for government services for everything that we do. Interestingly, it's actually requiring less property taxes this year because we have had some of those different sources that we've brought on. So wheel tax, streetlight fee, shared revenue. The general fund is diversifying its sources of revenue and is getting some good chunks of revenue that it can rely on for its increased costs this last year and the year before. And so it actually needs less property tax to fund it, at least proposed here for next year. The library operating fund, I just want to make a note, you know, it looks, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-one percent change. You know, the library operating fund kind of operates part and parcel with the general fund. They don't have other sources of revenue to really rely on. You can't send them wheel tax, you can't use the streetlight fee there, you can't send shared revenue there. So their source, their primary source is the property tax. So as the general fund is able to have different sources and rely on different funds, we're able to take the property tax that we don't use and give it to the library for, for their costs as well. And then you can see where the debt gets divvied out there from general debt service. And then a couple of our TIF districts have, require a little bit of property tax levy support as well to cover their debt. So that is that. Is there any questions on just levy limits and the tax levy amount?
Why does, why does TID four get, get money? I thought they were going like crazy. They had all the building over there.
Yep. So right now I think the projection is next year or the year after, they'll be, they won't be reliant on the general property tax anymore. Yep, yeah. So as, as value comes on and then we can start to gather, you know, take in the increment. It looks like projection, I think it's one or two years, it's actually in the packet somewhere. But that should start to wean off and not have to rely on the property, the general property tax, which TID five used to require general property tax levy and then starting last year supports itself. So, and will support itself this upcoming year again. So as far as the tax rate, so even though taxes are going up or the tax levy, the tax levy is going up, because of the appreciation of taxable value going up so much, when you divide a slightly smaller number by a slightly larger number, that percentage just comes in less. And so the tax rate is actually decreasing six percent. Now, most people are not going to see a property tax decrease because the value of their house has gone up. And so they will, even though they're being taxed at a lesser rate, they're being taxed more because they have more value. And so you can see that, I've kind of tried to depict that here. You know, if your property was valued at four hundred thousand in 2023 and let's say your value went up by the same percentage as that equalized value went up, about fifteen percent, you added about sixty thousand dollars under the value of your home. You know, you can see the impact of what the proposed budget looks like, a hundred and seventy dollars. Now if it was half of that, maybe it only went up seven percent, about thirty thousand, you can see it becomes a lot less, just twenty-one dollars, less than, just right at one percent. Now if your property happened to not change in value, which is probably pretty rare, yeah, you'll be taxed at a lower rate and you'll see that impact at almost six percent. So I think this is probably an area where people have a lot of misunderstandings of how the tax rate gets calculated. Just because your value of your home goes up does not necessarily, necessarily mean that there'll be a commensurate rise in property taxes with it. It just matters how much did your house go up compared to everybody else's? Did your slice of the pie increase or shrink? And so, you know, even if, I mean, you could probably add on a couple of thousand dollars if it just went up just a little bit, you probably will see a little bit of a decrease. But again, it's probably going to be pretty rare. But it just depends on, again, how much did yours go up compared to everybody else's? And I should say too, again, we're just talking about village taxes. This is in school district, tech college, Dane County. They have their own taxes that they set and put on the tax bill. And then of course, there's some other filters that happen with a portion tax increment. District levy is kind of a weird sort of thing that happens. And then school tax credits get added on, which decrease taxes. And then if you have a, a home, it's your primary residence, you also get lottery and first, first dollar tax credit. So there's some additional, additional filters that happen here. So nobody should look at this as being the exact amount that their taxes will be for the village. And then again, I just brought this, I showed this last year too. You know, again, last year's taxes, you know, the village of Oregon continues to be one of the lower taxed communities in Dane County for cities and villages. When you combine all of the tax rates, school districts, tech college, Dane County, we're in the bottom fifteen percent of, of the different, the forty-two unique taxing jurisdiction arrangements that occur between communities and school district boundaries. And so I have a couple of things there on the side there. Oregon is about nine point five percent lower than the average. If you have a four hundred thousand dollar assessed value home, you're taxed about seven hundred and four dollars less than the average four hundred thousand dollars assessed value home in Dane County. So we continue to be a little bit more affordable than other communities. Now, you know, if you look at Black Earth, which is the highest, you know, their, their taxes were three thousand, two hundred dollars more for a four hundred thousand dollar valued home. A four hundred thousand dollar value home in Black Earth compared to Oregon might be a little bit different, right? We're not comparing apples to, to apples here. So there are some, some distinctions, but it's in Dane County. So there's, there's some relative, relative comparison here. Shared revenue I mentioned, so if you've been on the board and you've gone through a few budget cycles, this is something completely new for all of you. And this is something completely different than if you're, if this is the first time you've gone through this. This is totally unique and unlike anything you will probably experience ever again. So the shared revenue law, shared revenue for local governments is, is money that's provided from the state to local governments. It usually funds about twenty percent of local government budgets. So taken with property tax, you'll see anywhere from seventy to ninety percent of local government budgets funded between these two revenue sources. So for the last twenty years, shared revenue has been slowly decreasing, going down. For the village of Oregon, it went down about forty-five percent between two thousand and three and two thousand and twenty-three. So finally, the state legislature passed the law this last legislative session in the summer and changed the way that shared revenue is working. And at least for the village of Oregon, that means almost three hundred thousand dollars more in revenue. And that will continue moving forward year after year. It will also be tied to the state sales tax. So at least presently, shared revenue was kind of capped year over year. And then they would sort of tinker with it every so often. So now the law is written that it's tied to sales tax. So if sales tax goes up, collections go up, local governments will get more shared revenue from those collections. So that's a good thing. And we've actually seen, they, the state has shared a projection for 2025, which would provide about another eight thousand dollars. Not a terrible amount of money, but it's better than the zero percent increases that we've seen or decreases over the last twenty years. So do my doom and gloom part here, not as bad as last year, I think. But, so for this year, so for last year, obviously we added about half a million dollars in revenue between the wheel tax and streetlight fee. We added almost three hundred thousand through shared revenue this year. So these last two budget, the last year's budget and this year's budget are pretty unusual. These are not normal circumstances. Having almost a million dollars in revenue, new revenue between two years is extremely rare. We've put that to good use, I think, in terms of staffing, catching employees up in wages and some other, and we've been able to accommodate some other things that have happened, like inflation, that sort of thing. So if we're looking at 2025 budget year, you know, we're going to be back to bare bones again, unless we do something else. So, you know, again, typically for a budget year, excluding this year and last year, we have the levy limit increase, which is anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand, give or take, depending on the year. So for the whole operation, that's the amount of new revenue we have, basically. And so to put that in context, you know, one of the positions that we prioritized in the strategic plan was, well, two police positions. We added one police position in, in the proposed budget for 2024. And we still have another position that we would like to do. That would be a lieutenant's position, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salary and benefits. So when all you have is a hundred and fifty thousand in new revenue, it's gone just like that, before you do anything else, before you accommodate more inflation over the next twelve months, before you do anything with employee wages, that's it. Even a, a one percent increase to on-union wages, which is most, most village employees, exclusive of the police officers, you immediately add on forty to fifty thousand dollars in wages. And we already have a contractual commitment with the police union, which is a three percent increase, blended three percent increase in 2025, which will add about thirty to forty-five thousand. So if you, if you only get about a hundred and fifty thousand in revenue from the property tax levy increase, you're almost already down to a hundred thousand just with the police officers. So then if you do one percent, if you do two percent for the rest of the staff, you've already used up all of the revenue that you have available. So I just want to make that clear so everybody has expectations in 2025 budget because these last two budgets have been very unusual where we've been able to be much more accommodating to some increased costs, adding staff, that sort of thing. And one of the ways previously that the village and a lot of communities have sort of worked around this is they use non-union employee wages as sort of the, the, the solve to fitting things into budgets. So if we, if they wanted to add a position, you would sort of ratchet down the percent increase to employee wages so that you could try to accommodate something new in the budget. And so that's, that was what, what took place, you know, previous, you know, the last ten year, ten, fifteen years. And so you had employee wages that had an annual average between two thousand and nine and twenty twenty-two of about one point five percent increase. And so when we did the compensation study last year, you know, it came back that staff is about anywhere from six to fourteen percent below market. And so you kind of find yourself, again, you know, in that catch twenty-two of, well, we want to add staff, we want to do different sorts of things, do services, et cetera, et cetera. But in order to do that, we have to lower the percentages that we increase employee wages. Then on the back end, over time, you start to get below. And then there's other effects of negative impacts on keeping that below market. So I just want to put that into everybody's mind of sort of what we're looking at in 2025 and beyond. I know when others came in August and they, they had our financial management plan, they showed this, this graph here, which projected out the general fund revenues and expenditures over ten years. So they had already projected in 2025, you know, we're going to be seeing a fifty thousand dollar deficit. So their projected amount of revenue that we're going to get versus projected amount of inflation for expenditures already starts to see an out of alignment there in 2025. And fifty thousand dollars is relatively solvable, I think, in our world. But when you get to 2026 and 2027, again, those are really tough numbers to overcome for us in the size of our budget. So last year, this was even, you know, even more of a doom and gloom presentation by me. But this number, this four eighteen, this two twenty-nine, they were pushed up to this year in 2024 and 2025. We did the wheel tax, we did the streetlight fee, that kind of pushed it out. Now we have the shared revenue that kind of helped push it out some more. And so, you know, we're looking at, you know, if we don't really do anything, we're going to have to accept either things, everything's going to stay the same, no new staff, no new services, or we have to accept that we're going to keep staff wages lower over the, the next couple of years in order to accommodate some of those different things that we may want to do. The other option, of course, the other two options, of course, are reducing costs. So prioritizing services, eliminating or reducing services. Now the only way to really do that is to eliminate staff because that's where you're going to make up money. Because the operating budget is mostly staff costs. And if you want to try, try to generate savings, the only way you're going to accomplish that is through reduced staffing, which then reduces the service rate effectively. We talked about consolidation just previously. Those are options too out there. They don't often tend to save a lot of money or at least a ton of money. They do help stabilize costs and they can be shared and spread out amongst different parties. So those are some options as well. The other option is raising revenue. In last year's budget conversation, this, you know, this is the same conversation that we had. And at that time, we had some low hanging fruit. We had wheel tax and streetlight fee, which is rel, are relatively easy things to, to do administratively. And so we obviously move forward with those. Those low hanging fruit are pretty much gone at this point. So we can do things like create utilities for some of our services. Stormwater utilities are very common. But the challenge with creating utilities is they're very, very costly to set up. And the state legislature has closed the savings loophole for some of those utilities. So if we wanted to set up a stormwater utility, we'd actually have to decrease the amount of property taxes that go to a stormwater, to our stormwater expenses. And then we could create the fee. So you don't create any savings basically upfront. But over time, that cost is now off the general fund and increases are not going to be realized on the general fund side, they're going to be realized on the utility side. So that's more of a long-term endeavor. If you want to go down that route, it's not going to save you money in the first year or first couple of years. But over time, it's more of a structural change that helps ensure that those costs are still hitting the general fund. So then the other, sort of the last option is the levy referendum. So an operational referendum, you can go to the, to the public and ask to increase your levy. That is an option. That was pretty darn rare for municipalities just a couple of years ago. But last year, three Dane, Dane County communities did an operational rever, referendum, Middleton, Shorewood Hills, and I believe Monona, and all three were successful. But they went out for staffing for. Um, but they went out for staffing, for employee wages increases, these big ticket items that. They're facing the same thing, their communities are growing just like ours and they need additional staff and they can't fit that in their existing budgets. And they can't fit in employee wage increases because they're trying to find that trade-off. Um, and I know there's at least a couple others that are, are considering it over the next one to two years. So. Um, you know, that's something that for the board to think about, not necessarily for this budget cycle. Um, unless we wanted to immediately start thinking about a referendum in twenty twenty four for the twenty twenty five budget. Um, but certainly within, you know, the, this next three to four-year timeframe. It's either going to be acceptance of sort of trying to tinker with employee wages and try to add things around the margins. Or reduce, or most likely go to referendum to try to expand. Is there any questions?
So, biggest, big assumption here, I'm just looking for big picture, but. If we needed to go to referendum for twenty twenty five budget. What does it cost to? Put a referendum on the ballot and do all the, the homework for how much money we need, cause there's a cost to doing that too.
Right. Uh, I'm not sure. I mean, we could certainly investigate that. Um, I think you would want to bring on some kind of PR firm, you know, which is. Common for school districts and I know the municipalities that have gone out, have done that just to um, communicate. What's actually happening and what's going to be in the referendum so that you can get that information out there. Uh, so there'll be some cost there. Um, in terms of like the actual mechanics of getting it on the referendum, getting it on the ballot. I'm not sure that there's a ton, yeah, timing and deadlines, um, some staff time, that sort of thing. Um. There would be some uh, work on the staff side as far as. Uh, a- and, and in conversation with the village board in terms of what are we going for? Like, what, what are we looking at here? I would say it's probably staff because that's what we need and that's the big cost that we can't fit into the budget without a lot of money. Um, so I'm guessing we would probably wanna do some sort of. You know, request to department heads of, okay, we're going to referendum, what do you need? And we, we know, what do we think the cost of that is gonna be? Because we're, we're not gonna go out to referendum every couple of years, it's probably gonna be a. An extended period of time. And so if it's, you know, maybe we're only gonna do one referendum within ten years or. Can reasonably expect one referendum to be successful every ten years. Um, what staffing do we think that we need within the next? Five to ten years and let's try to bite that off as part of the referendum. Um, so I mean, and then I think there's, you know, sort of strategy in terms of. Um, what should we go for? What should we not go for? Uh, what do we think the, uh, the residents will vote for, what they won't vote for? So I mean, those are conversations that the board and has to have, and staff can certainly provide input to.
Charlie.
I appreciate all the background and um, that went into just explaining. How, how we have come to be where we are. It occurs to me that before we would ever go to referendum, the public in general needs to understand how we got to where we are. And I'm wondering, yeah, I know you already wrote a very comprehensive long report. But I'm wondering if there's a way to get this in just the observer or something else like. How, how any municipality in the state of Wisconsin gets to where we are with this kind of thing and in particular. How the village of Oregon has managed up to this point to really. Be in that bottom fifteen percent of property taxes and those kinds of things because. You know, I ran again for board last year and people will, why are you spending money on this? Why are you spending money on that without a, a lot of appreciation for. For what we are spending money on and how, how everyone who works for the village is trying to. Be as penny conscience, conscious as possible. Um, so it's just a suggestion, but something I think that, that, you know, residents. Need more information about to understand how, how we got to here and why we would even be considering something for future. Cause hands are tied. I mean, there'll be reductions and there'll be other ways to raise the, raise funds. I mean, I think. I don't see it as a one choice out of all those three. I see it as a combination of all three. And a decision that we will have to make at some point.
Yeah, and I think, uh, too, if we're talking new services, so I, I know there's. Been conversation about, you know, rec- recreation departments or public transportation or, you know, different. Different public services that we're not necessarily really in the business of right now, but people are interested in. And, and as we've become a larger community, people start to have some of those expectations and interests. Um, you know, how can you fund, create and fund a recreation department? In this environment, you can't. You, you have, if that's something the village wants, the, the residents want, you have to go to referendum to. Prop up something like that. So that, that would be another part of the equation too, I think, is thinking about things like that in terms of. Okay, we need staff to support our existing services, but as a community of where we are right now. What are some things we're not into that maybe we would like to if we had the resources to do it? Um, and maybe some of those things are more sellable, um, in a referendum.
Amen.
And also, timing is really important because, um, the school district referendums, we, we can't. Hit people in the same year with two different, you know, uh, entities taxing them, uh, more. That's very difficult. And so, um, I know the, the school district is looking at building a. Middle school at some point, um, north of the cemetery and their, that property there and that is. It's still a ways out for them. So if we were going to do a referendum. This timing seems better, cause by, if you're looking at by, oh, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. The school district might be looking at doing theirs so they can build the school by twenty thirty, I think. So. You know, we, we wanna stagger it cause we can't hit everybody at once. So something else to keep in the back of our minds.
Alright, so, setting that aside, just for the twenty twenty four budget, um. Again, we, we had a, a, a source of revenue to, to tap into with shared revenue, so that made. Uh, doing some things this year a little bit easier. Um, and so in the budget document here, I have sort of the top headlines of. Um, where you're seeing impacts in the budget. Um, so when we pulled the first draft of the budget together in August, um. It was a, a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. Um, and so we. We worked with department heads, we, you know, Lisa and I always have meetings in August, one-on-one with all the department heads to get a little bit more into the weeds of. Their proposals and, and their numbers. Um, and so one of the areas that we pulled back. And ended up only pulling back just a little bit was in employee salaries. So we did. So if you remember in August, we talked about a placeholder for, for salaries and we set. A couple criteria for, uh, for employee wages and we built that into that initial draft. Um, and so we were able to keep most of the criteria that we were going to use in that proposal. We did end up taking away the minimum four percent. Uh, and so if, uh, if you were an employee that wasn't otherwise affected by. The longevity piece, uh, or, uh, we talked about police department management staff as a component of this. Um, if you weren't affected by those, you're still going to receive a two point five percent increase, which is a step on the scale. And actually with this proposal. Um. We, anybody that is below four years of longevity with the village. Is it, will actually be at their correct step now on the wage scale. So the minimum four percent was actually kind of helping people get pushed above that a little bit. So this will put people in that correct step. So if you have one year with the village, you're gonna be at a step two. And that's reflected here in the budget. If you're, if you're three years with the village, you'll be at a step four. So all the employees. Um, in the village are either going to be at their correct step on the scale in this proposal. Or they're gonna be at step five, which is one step below the average market rate for their position. So from going from six to fourteen percent below market. To now everybody either being on the scale in the correct spot or just a step below average market rate is actually. Pretty incredible. Um, and there's a lot of tough decisions that last year's board made. Uh, to, to, to get us to, to bite off that huge chunk of that. And then I, we're, this year, we're able to bite off. Another pretty decently sized chunk with the, with the shared revenue increase. So for most employees, you know, they're gonna fall into three categories in the, in this proposal. If you're affected by the longevity recognition piece, you're gonna get a, around a five percent increase. There are a few, less than ten employees who missed the longevity cutoff last year. And since we're cast for, casting a wider net this year, they're getting scooped up, um, to where they should be. And so some of them are accelerating a little bit more quickly on the, the scale because they just missed it last year. So. Oh, I think it's less than ten are gonna get about eleven percent increase. And then, uh, again, anybody that was below four years will at least get a two point five percent. Because they're getting a step on the scale. And then there are a handful of employees who are above step five because their wages. Were closer to actual market rate before the compensation study. And so they're already placed higher. They're also all going to get a step, which is a minimum tw- two point five percent. Uh, and then police officer, union employees are set by contract, they're getting a blended five percent, which is a three percent. January first and then an additional two percent July first. Um, so again, I think we've done quite a bit, um, to get ourselves back to, uh, com- uh, market. For our positions for comparable communities. And then also, uh, have done quite a bit to sort of combat that. Inflationary piece with, uh, again, we saw earlier about five point four percent annual inflation. So again, a lot of our employees are, are being able to, uh, stay on top of that. Uh, for employee benefits, um, you know, here's another. Piece where inflation is, is sort of kicking us, health insurance premiums went up about thirteen percent. Um, so, uh, again, that's a pretty big, seven percent increase for the employer side, so about fifteen hundred employee. Um, but then it's also gonna be felt on the employee side too. So you can see the impacts here where. Um, our employees get, uh, choices of three different, uh, providers through the state health insurance plan. Uh, and you can see, uh, about forty-five plus a paycheck for GHC, tw- thirty-three for courts. So that's, I don't know if we have. Many people on Dean anymore, but, um, most of our employees are on GHC in courts. So that's, you know, just a little bit under a thousand dollars for people who are on quartz. And then a little bit over a thousand dollars for people are on GHC. So they're starting to, they're feeling it that way, um, from less money in their paycheck. But hopefully, again, we're doing some things on the wage side that are trying to accommodate that. Retirement, um, village, the employer contributes some that went up just slight a little bit. Again, uh, workers' compensation premiums, we're seeing go up, some small decreases in some groups of employees. Um, we talked about shared revenue. Um. One thing impacting really all of the funds is investment income. So interest rates are going up, so whereas we were getting almost nothing for investment income over the last decade. Suddenly we're accumulating a lot of investment income. Um, so we're, I think we only budgeted for ten thousand dollars in investment income. This year and we're over two hundred thousand. Um, so this is kind of a tricky one because you don't wanna rely on it. Too heavily for ongoing operations because if the economy tanks and interest rates go down. Suddenly you've blown a hole in your budget and you need to reduce, um, ongoing costs somehow. Um, so, you know, Lisa and I talked a little bit about what do we feel comfortable conservatively relying on? Uh, and right now we have eighty thousand dollars in the twenty-four budget as. Uh, money relied on to fund ongoing operations. So, this year, we're gonna have more than we expected. Next year. We might, might possibly have more than what we're budgeting here. Um, but this is. Sort of on the back end here where when we have these sorts of surpluses, we use that to fund, uh, smaller capital costs. So vehicles, um, smaller equipment, um, building, you know, major maintenance on buildings, that sort of thing. So, um, you know, it doesn't usually make sense to take out a ten-year note on a police squad that's only gonna last five years. Uh, you're paying on the debt on that longer than its useful life. So if we can avoid that, we try to do that and usually we can. And so this is how we do that. So there's, we're conservative in some areas of the budget so that we don't, uh, create too much risk. But on the back end, we're able to save on debt financing costs and, uh, you know, in principal interest payments on debt over, uh, multiple years. Uh, rental income is another area. Uh, one thing I wanted to highlight here was, um. If you've been on the board for a couple of years now, you know that the post office rent has always been sort of something that's kind of been up in the air. We, of course, own the current post office and collect rent on it. Um, that's been about fifty to seventy thousand a year over the last several years. That's going away. We've been, we've been anticipating that. And so this budget, uh, does not rely on that at all. So we've been able to get ourselves off of that. There's about six months more revenue. And again, we're putting that into building and equipment capital so that we can use that for smaller capital costs to reduce there. Um, I have a note in here about, uh, rent that's water and sewer utilities pay for. Uh, village hall costs and public works garage costs because our utilities. Use these buildings, but the cost of those buildings sits in the general fund. So we have taxpayers versus ratepayers. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we're balancing, uh, the burden on those two. Uh, so we've increased the amount of rent for the utilities for those two locations. Um, so that is in there. Elections, we got a big election year in twenty twenty four. Uh, that adds sort of an irregular operational cost, um, about fifty thousand dollars ish. And added cost for just the amount of elections we're gonna have in the scale with being a presidential election. Um, and Candy is asking for some increases to, uh, poll worker wages. Uh, Oregon, uh, the fire district, of course, we had the joint meeting last week. Um, the nice thing with the fire district this year is that their operational request went down five percent. Cause they're recognizing some EMS revenue that was conservatively estimated in the last couple of years and we're recognizing that. Um, the, the increased amount more, so that's helping on the operational contribution amount. Um, so that created about forty thousand dollars in savings for the village and of course, we're able to use that elsewhere in the budget. Um, I do have a note in here and I won't go over it detail, but, um, there is a levy exception. Levy limit exception related to joint fire districts and EMS districts. And it's basically like an expenditure restraint. Um, sort of, uh, concept where if you, if the district. May, withhold, withholds its expenses under a certain rate, you actually can use the amount that the contribution is going up to. Increase your levy by the same amount. Um, and so let's say. Um, the contribution amount that the village had to give went up fifty thousand dollars. And that met the expenditure threshold, uh, in the state law. The village could actually increase its levy by fifty thousand dollars. So instead of having to hit the general fund. Um, and affect, uh, you know, eat up that levy limit that we talked about earlier, it could just. We could just increase taxes for it and just use that. Um, that's pretty rare just because. Capital costs are included in that and capital costs go up and down pretty dramatically from year to year. And so, uh, most likely, we won't be able to take advantage of that. Potentially in twenty twenty six because capital costs are gonna drop that one year. So it's something that we can keep an eye on. Um, senior centers, that remains sort of the big, uh, outlier here in the budget. Um, in terms of what contributions the other partners will give. um in terms of what contributions the other partners will give. Um, I'll talk about contingency in a second related to that. We're realizing the full year of new revenues from the wheel tax and streetlight fee. We talked about inflation, so you'll see line items that have gone up here or there just because of increased costs for utilities, salt and sand for snow and plow, plowing operations, that sort of thing. Same thing with the villages' insurances, uh property insurance, liability insurance. Um, again, they're seeing the same sorts of things across the broader economy in terms of inflation. And so we're feeling those effects, too, in terms of increases. And then the whole budget is balanced with about sixty thousand dollars in contingency. So uh that we're sort of holding on to for whatever happens with the senior center. We have open enrollment for employees for health insurance in October. We're pretty confident we captured everything there, but there's always potential for a random person who didn't take it to take single or take family. So we gotta accommodate that. Um, and then just any other unknowns that could happen over the next, you know, thirty-four days. Um, so those are sort of the big headlines, and then we have some proposed staffing changes. Um, a few, couple of new positions, and then some leveraging of some existing positions to take on some uh some different duties because, of course, you know, we can't just add staff as we've talked about. It costs, so we try to use our staff in different ways to try to get the best out of them. And so I'll just run through these really quick. So I'm proposing to modify the village clerk position to a deputy village administrator slash village clerk position. Um, so the position would still do the village clerk duties, everything that the position is currently doing, but it would take on some additional uh duties in terms of responsibilities and authorities for uh administration of the whole village. Um, so that's special projects, special initiatives, um helping village staff with uh direction, problem solving, advice, uh that sort of thing. So one of the things that, and this will be for every one of these positions listed, is with our new compensation study, we have the consultant who did that study for us. They can, they have a questionnaire for if you have a new position or a changed position that you can submit, and they can reclassify or grade the position onto the scale. And so we've done that for all of these positions here. And so you can see the the impact on this particular position. And then you can see, again, through all of these positions here, what those what those changes would look like. Um, for a different position uh in public works, we have currently have one parks crew person position that individual is retiring this month. Uh, and public works is proposing to uh fill that position in a different way with a parks manager position. So as we've talked about earlier tonight, um our parks system is becoming uh much more sophisticated with uh irrigation systems, athletic fields, uh chemical usage, landscaping, plantings, that sort of thing. So the department's looking for a position who will still uh certainly be a laborer similar to the parks crew person, but would potentially have some background in things like um soils uh or landscaping, um some some kind of uh education or experience in in that uh field. So that is within the proposed budget. Um, we do have, as I mentioned before, an additional police officer position uh in the budget. We also, when we pulled together the draft budget and had the three hundred thousand dollar deficit, we did have the second police position in there. So that became sort of uh an easy solve to remove that one. That was the hundred and fifty thousand dollar one. That helped us get well on our way to solving that deficit number. Um, but again, that's something to to consider in the future. Uh, the library has uh been targeting the creation of a teen librarian position. We actually had this position uh graded and classified in the compensation plan last year, but in the intention that it would be filled in the future. We talked about it as part of the strategic plan, village board strategic plan this year. So we were able to get that position uh fully funded for the year in the the budget. Uh, the uh Judge Pollock at the municipal court is requesting a pretty limited part-time position, only two hundred and forty hours a year. Um, a juvenile services worker to help the court with juvenile cases and following up on juvenile cases. Uh, so that is in the budget. Um, and that one is only about seven hun- uh is only about seven thousand dollars in costs uh just because of the amount of hours. Uh, we added a janitor position. So uh previous to twenty twenty-three, we used a contracted service for all of the janitorial services in the village. Last year, we uh realized that hiring a full-time position would actually be cheaper than the service. And so we did that. And so this year, we're asking to uh add a second one because the library's contracted cleaning service is now over forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, so we see a benefit of almost a wash on their side of things, but then a benefit on our side of things with uh the increasing size of this building, the increasing size of the library. Um, there's a lot more need and time that needs to be spent in these buildings. And so um, you know, there's a this forty thousand dollar offset by getting rid of the contracted service. And so we're only adding about thirty thousand in annual cost for the position uh for a second position. And then the last uh piece of this in terms of staffing changes is again similar to the uh village clerk position. Um, trying to uh leverage positions and people that we already have um to try to uh use them in different ways. And so here, the public works department is proposing to uh change the chief slash lead operators in the water and sewer department to become managers. And so those positions would be uh now supervisors of their respective staff, have more discretion uh for uh spending, for, you know, operational decision-making, um that sort of thing. So just a different way to distribute work and uh empower some of the employees that we have to to take on some some different roles. So that uh those two positions would add about ten thousand dollars each. Uh, but there would be some savings on some overtime costs because these positions would now become uh exempt from uh F L S A exempt, so they wouldn't be subject to overtime. Um, so uh we've included that, and of course, those are on the water and sewer side, so don't affect the the general fund side. So those are between staff changes and sort of the top headlines for here that I went over. Those are really the big, big impacts that you're gonna see throughout the budget and why numbers are changing the way that they're changing. Uh, I did include in here the village board strategic plan and just kind of gave an update on terms of timeframes. Um, and included some notes about, you know, whether something was put in the budget or not. So you can see this project costing the budget, costing the budget. Um, if we have uh some resources, time, money for next year, those um are noted to be uh potential options to be to be worked on. Um, so I just updated that so you, so the board has an awareness of what's in, what's possible for being worked on, and what might be for twenty twenty-five. Um. Any questions at all?
Nope.
All right. I think I'm gonna end it there.
Okay. Yeah, I think we got some sleepy faces down there, so maybe that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, questions? Okay, uh, thank you, Martin, and, oh, sorry.
Like I said before, if, you know, this is the total budget. Um, and you can see the line item budgets are down below, you know, they look like this. So that's the actual numbers being put to two things, and that will be budgeted and accounted for. And when you do the approval, that's what those numbers will go, and that's how the board or the staff will use those numbers. Um, so again, you have, you know, forty days, fifty days to to keep reviewing all of this. If you have questions, feel free to shoot an email over, make a phone call. If you wanna set up a time with the department, go through a budget. I'm sure department heads would be happy to do that as well. Um, so yeah, you have you have some time to to look through all of this, and we'll keep talking about it at each meeting here.
Okay, thank you, Martin, and uh to be continued. Uh, item ten, reports of village officers, department heads, consultants. This is for information only. No action by the village board will be taken. Reports are in the meeting packet. A was the village administrator report. Um, comments or Amanda?
Nope, sorry, it's the next one.
Sorry? Oh, you mean your comment or?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, uh, item uh ten A one, Public Service Commission final decision to adjust water rates is approved, tenor to first billing date of new rates for December services bill for usage in November. Uh. Someone wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so basically what it says, so the the Public Service Commission held the uh public hearing. Um, there was no comments. There's nobody, nobody attended, no, nobody stated, nobody co- no comments at all. So uh they did approve the uh rates that they put forth. Uh, and so we've gotten that final decision. Uh, of course, this is sort of an odd process, a low local control odd process because we request the new rates, and then they pretty much take it from there at that point, and we don't really have control. Um, so they approve them. Um, and staff has uh worked with P S C that the first billing will occur in December for November use usage. So the rates go in effect actually October thirty-first, but they won't be billed for the first time until that December bill. Um, so just making everybody aware that that's what has transpired.
Amanda.
Yeah, I I just caught my eye that the uh the billing issue. What, can someone just explain what was happening there for the public? The public fire protection charges, that's part of their conclusion that we have to correct our our billing of, cause I was like, we didn't, we don't have any water customers that are outside of our water district except for the correctional facility, right?
Correctional is not a water.
That's the only sewer, okay. So I guess I was confused that I have no idea what they're talking about.
I think it's a minor thing that's, you know, it's not really on our radar.
It it was a tiny issue, something that.
Is that, what page is that, Amanda?
Um, let's see, three forty-one, three forty-one in the packet. Yeah.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, um, I believe there was I think it was four customers who were incorrectly billed the public fire protection charge, and two of those customers were the village of Oregon itself. Um, so, and I'm not, I can't recall what the issue was, but um yeah, they have to be addressed. I don't, I'm not sure which way it was, if it was, they had to be billed more.
Not a major thing. It's a very, very minor thing that we can just do and, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
How far back does that look when they're talking about when those?
I think P S C can only go back, I think, twenty-four months.
Two years, yeah. So if they discover that uh something was not billed correctly, like we underbilled.
Yeah.
Um, they will often require the utility to go back up to two years and collect that unbilled unpaid bill.
Okay.
And I was in a community where there was a great error, and that was not fun.
Um. Okay, so that's uh any other questions on that? Okay, uh, item two, Oregon Rotary Club Electronics Recycling Event set for Saturday, October fourteenth from eight AM to noon at H M C Church, six fifty-one North Main Street, open to everyone. Okay, and uh ten B, Police Chief Report, July and August twenty twenty-three monthly reports included in your packet. Uh, anything to add on that?
Uh, yeah, sure. So in the packet is the July and August uh monthly report. Just to highlight, and it's already in the report, but lots been covered tonight. Um, yeah, August sixth, our officers responded to an address on East Lincoln Street for an intoxicated male causing a disturbance who was armed with a handgun. Uh, our officers were able to go in safely deescalate the situation, and ultimately, the individual was taken to jail uh for charges.
Jenny, can you speak into that?
On August thirteenth, um, it's a busy month for us. We had an armed robbery at the apartments at the nine hundred block of Janesville Street. Um, I got several calls that night on this one. Uh, we took our time, and we were able to safely get the suspect out of the apartment without putting out anyone else in danger. He was ultimately arrested for armed robbery and possession of a stolen firearm, as well as some drug charges. And um on the sixteenth of that same month, we had K nine Archie went over and assisted McFarland P D with a traffic stop uh where the the sniff resulted in a positive alert where cocaine and firearms were located in the vehicle. Uh, the reason I I highlight these ones specifically is the village board has um graciously funded additional equipment for our officers so that it can keep them safer. As you can see, just in the month of August, we had multiple calls where we're dealing with firearms and in dangerous situations. Um, we now have extra plates that go into uh their carriers to keep them extra safe. And they have those ballistic shields that are much nicer now. They have brand-new tactical helmets um and additional training on deescalation, which is clearly working. So just, you know, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Tim C, Director of Public Works Report, thanking the Melby family for Kaiser Park dugouts and concession building painting.
Yeah, just to kind of recognize them, uh John had noticed that these were in need of some a coat of paint, and uh he and his family agreed to put all the the labor towards it. We purchased the materials and um actually did some other improvements to the dugouts before they painted. Um, they did a really nice job with that, as well as uh the painting of the uh concession stand there as well, too. So just really wanna thank John, his wife Marissa, their three kids, Sienna, Declan, and Landon um for just giving back to the community.
Great, terrific. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Uh, Carly?
Just wanna note that the D E I committee is currently scheduled for the fifth. It has been moved to the twelfth because of the joint uh village board plan commission meeting at the same time. And I think Tim's the only person on the D E I committee. You can't make it because apparently public transportation is meeting at that time, so. And he's on both.
Our, we're meeting later, just I I think ours doesn't start till seven to accommodate an another uh committee member, so I don't know if that helps, just letting you know.
I maybe will check with the other D E I committee members and Candy get with you, and maybe we can move it to six so that Tim, if he wants to, can get to both. Okay.
Anyone else? I I wanna make note that the uh, of course, we we re-formatted the uh re- uh reaffirm these sustainability committee, but uh at this time, we don't have, well, we have three yeses and two maybes. And uh to my knowledge, no other further applicants, so call for applicants if you're out there listening or anyone here knows that somebody might wanna serve. We need probably need at least five to get started anyway. Thank you. Anybody else? Amanda?
Transportation Committee also still needs people. We're only at four, so just putting that out there, too. We we need people, volunteers. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Lynn?
Sorry, if someone were interested, they should contact.
Uh, well.
It's on the village website.
On the village website.
Martin or myself.
Martin, Candy, or that village website. That's so beautiful.
Yep. Okay, eleven uh B, future agenda items. Derek?
Like to put on the next agenda to for the next meeting to move the R F P process for the downtown master plan uh for discussion.
Objection to that? No? Anybody else? Amanda?
Uh, we were at some point going to have a conversation about volunteers and how to, the people like the Melby family who volunteer in a way to organize that, does that need to be on a, a future agenda, if so, I can?
You're talking about volunteer policy? Is that?
Well, yeah, of policy and, and scheduling and like, you know, who, who handles that? How, how as a village we can, yeah, like, like allow people to volunteer and, and kind of in an organized manner.
So we have a, in the strategic plan, we have a goal to create a village-wide volunteer policy. So it is, it's in the hopper.
So it doesn't need to be put on a future.
Well, if, if this is a, if it's a priority, we could certainly accelerate it. But yeah, I think, I think I have right now, my plan is to work on that over the winter and do that sometime in early spring for approval.
I, I'm okay with having it on the agenda for, for spring, whenever that is.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Item twelve, closed session business, discussion of possible action. Under Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, attendance is limited to the village board and at its discretion and unnecessary staff, other officers, or other individuals whose presence is necessary for business at hand. A, senior center service agreement negotiation with participating and non-participating communities looking for a motion for this. Derek? Carleen, this is a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Belo?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
And McDaniel?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you.